Forgot my goddamn glasses, too.
You're starting.
Ready, roll? So I want to welcome everybody to our second town hall meeting that we had planned for today. And Monica and I are going to run through some stuff around data for the department and things that we've been talking to the legislature about. We have an agenda, I don't know if that's been posted anywhere.
It was posted on the website.
Posted on the website. I'm just going to turn it over to Monica in a minute for meeting logistics. I think the first thing I'd like to say is we got a lot of good questions the last time. I drew a little bit of criticism for not responding to questions in this forum. And one of the reasons I didn't do that is because a lot of these questions need research. And so we're not going to do that. We're going to continue to do it the way we had planned, which is to post the questions and the answers on our website. Also, if you've provided an email to Monica today or at the last meeting, she's been emailing the questions out. So we're able to give a much more contemplated answer. And like last time, Monica and I hope to turn it around within a couple of weeks to get some answers back. So I'm going to turn it over to Monica now for the logistics really quick, and then we'll start moving through the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, just in case there are people here who didn't participate in the meeting last time, I'm just going to do the logistics each time. So the idea is that we have multiple sites around the state and want to give everybody an opportunity to talk. I don't think there's many people on the meeting today as there were in December. But we will sort of rotate around by site and give people a chance to comment for a few minutes. And as the commissioner said, we're going to just write down your questions and not respond to them. We will post them on the website like I did for the last meeting. Again, we're not also going to get into any type of individual cases. You do have representatives from the department at each one of the sites. If there's a particular question you have about a case, that person at the local site should be able to help you with those kinds of questions. Again, once we have everything organized, I'll post the answers to the questions on the website. I'm going to show you a little bit about the website during the meeting. And that's about it, logistics-wise.
Okay, so I don't know if you said this already, but we did take a couple of case questions last time. We did follow up on them. Certainly not going to go into great detail when it comes to individual people's cases. It's just, this is not an appropriate venue for that. The stuff that Monica's going to walk through is kind of what we've been showing the legislature. And it's all available on our website. And it really is an accumulation of where the department is heading and some of the success that we're seeing. So you're going to go through directives first?
Yeah, I'm going to show people just again where the directives are.
Okay. Do we have an idea of how many people are on?
I'm not entirely sure how many people are on. Maybe Steve can tell us that.
Okay.
I told people at the last meeting that if there were new directives out, we would go through those at the town hall meetings. Currently, we don't have any directives posted for, or any new directives posted for feedback, but I did want to show people where you can go and remind you that if you are interested in being on a list, there is a list that goes out when directives get posted. So you can send me your email address. I'll add you, well, I'll send your email to the person who sends that out and get you added to the list. That way, you don't have to continuously keep going back to the website to see if the directives are posted. However, if you do want to look, you would go to our homepage, doc.vermont.gov, and click on About the Department of Corrections. And click on Policies and Directives. And then down on this page, you would go down to... How come I can't find where it is? Policies and, thank you. Recent new revised. I don't think that's the right one. Proposed, pardon me. Proposed policies and directives. And you can see what's up there, and then you can see what the comment period is for those policies and directives. I do know that there are a number of directives being worked on right now, so I would suggest that you look in a few weeks if you are interested in checking those out. Or again, send me an email and I'll make sure that you're added to the list.
So one of the things I want to underline is the way the department shapes its operations is through this directive process. So if you're interested, you should read the directive, see if there's things, comments that you want to make. We won't always accept your comments. We'll always accept the comments. We may not always incorporate them into the directive, but it's an important public process. That was it?
Yeah, that was all. Since I would have gone through them, but there's really nothing new there to review. So now I think we'll just move into, unless you have anything else, the facts and figures. I do want to show you before I give you the short presentation on facts and figures. It's a big book. It looks like this. But it's also available on our website in a PDF format. So again, if you went to About the Department of Corrections and you clicked on Published Reports, the first thing you're going to see is facts and figures. For the most recent one is fiscal year 2012. Right below that, where it says archived facts and figures, you will get the facts and figures that have existed for years and years and years if you want to sort of make any kind of comparisons. So I'm just going to show you a selection of slides from the facts and figures page, but a lot of people have questions that are answered very easily by looking at this book. So just wanted to show you that before I went into the presentation. Okay, so first, I want to start out by showing this slide, which is a summary in general of sort of trends or historical perspective. The first line there you can see is the number of unique people that we saw. And what we've done on this slide is sort of give you a decade history. So 2002 to 2012 and what the change has been. So you can see that in 2012, in total, 16,000, almost 17,000 people were seen by the Department of Corrections in a variety of statuses. And that's a decline of 14% from the past decade. The other measures, incarceration and so forth, down to house and under the out-of-state, are average daily population. So it's sort of on average, how many people were in that status during the year. So for incarceration, on average, we had about 2,100 people in that status on an average day. So that's how to read this particular slide. You can see of note here, down towards the bottom, the probation numbers have gone down dramatically from 2002 to 2012. Certainly, there's some activities within the department and some legislation that's really impacted that number. So we've sort of expected to see that number go down. The next slide, it's kind of a little messy, but what it shows is in general that at a certain point, we were projected to be using, if you look all the way up in the top right-hand corner here, around 3,400 beds by fiscal year 2013. And due to a number of things, I don't know if you want to talk about, we've been able to sort of turn that trend and keep the population much lower so that we haven't had to potentially make some other action around beds that would have needed to take place.
So the one thing I would point to, because I know there's a number of DOC staff at the sites, is if you look at the number of persons seen, it's going down.
Right.
The number of people on our field statuses has consistently gone up, which has led to, oops, what did I do?
I don't know. What do you want to go to? This one?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, there we go.
Which has led to a really big decrease in our use of incarceration, which, when you're balancing the state budget and all the other things that we have to do, has made it a lot easier. Our funding for the last three years has remained stable. And I recredit a lot of that to the hard work by probation and parole staff in moving cases through and our casework staff. And so that's, you know, it's a department that consistently draws a lot of criticism, but it's a department that we know is doing really good work. And I know there's always going to be attention within the system, but our probation and parole officers are doing a pretty remarkable job at a macro level. I know we talk about a lot of individual cases, but at a macro level, we've drawn a lot of accolades from the legislature for this chart, for bending the curve. We're the first, for the first time in the department's history, we're bending the curve. We've talked about bending the curve all along the way, but we actually have been in the curve. And we're doing it in a way that's smart. And I haven't seen this presentation, but you have some outcome data? Charges and all sorts of things? Criminal charges? If not, I'll get to it at the end, but I'll show you where the outcome data is on this.
What was the service chart you were referring to? I might have what you're looking for. Okay, so the next chart is our total population. We changed this, the format of facts and figures to start with the 21st century. Some of you might recall that it went back, in some cases, to the 80s, and we were kind of running out of room on the page. So now we've started with fiscal year 2001 or calendar year 2000. So you can see over here across the decade, the various statuses that we've had. Again, this is going to be average daily population, so it's not full flow of people, but it certainly can show you the change over time. The next chart does a little bit better job of breaking it out so you can see what's happened. Again, it shows the probation numbers going down. It shows an increase in the reentry intermediate sanctions, which is, I think, is something that we've been trying to do. Parole numbers staying relatively stable. But then again, as we were talking about, the incarcerated numbers still looking that way. One of the things I know we're all paying attention to is detention, our detention numbers. This is also average daily population. We look at the detainee number on a daily basis. We know how many people are detained every single day. The general sense is that detention numbers are going up. We would like them to come down, and we're working on that. I'm not sure if there's anything that you'd like to add there.
That's about all, yeah.
Yeah, that's about all there is to say about detention. This is just a quick snapshot of people who are given time to serve and in general, sort of what categories they fall in and if there's been any kind of change over the period of time. So you see the felony convictions, misdemeanor convictions, and motor vehicle convictions. What we can see here is a slight increase in the misdemeanor convictions.
No, it's actually a third.
Third, so it's not a slight increase, yeah. No, it's fine. There is an increase in the misdemeanor convictions, people getting time to serve. Feel free to jump in anytime.
You're doing a good job.
Yeah, okay. Trying to, you know, move along. This particular chart is just going to show the reason why we break out prison and jail and just kind of gives you a sense of the number of people who are in those statuses. So for those of you who may or may not know, prison is that you're given time to serve that's more than one year. Jail, you're given a maximum that's a year or less. We make those breakdowns because a lot of times that helps us compare our system, which is an integrated system, to other states that have these separate systems of jail and prison. So we've been doing this for a while to be able to see. And again, you can see the increase here in the prison population, a decrease in the jail population, and a substantial increase in the detainee population. We often want to look at the difference between violence. So in this chart, we have the percentage of incarcerated population that's violent, and we break it down by male and female. I don't have anything in particular to say about this chart. It's just something that we certainly get asked about a fair amount, and that some of the people are. I don't know what that noise is.
That one's probably too loud.
It's too heavy? I just want to tell, since I have it here, can I just tell people? One of the things that this chart does is different than the first chart that I showed you, is that it gives you the entire flow. So on the top, that's the same number of persons seen, that's the same number as the first chart. But then when we start to see incarcerated, the other number was average daily population. So that was 2,100 people. This one shows that over the course of the year, there were 6,600 people who came through in an incarcerated status at some point. So that's how you would read this chart. And again, I didn't say this, but the numbers that are on the bottom of these slides are actually the corresponding numbers in facts and figures. So if you were interested in looking at it, you could go and check it out. So this just sort of gets a sense of flow, how many people are coming in and out on these different statuses throughout the year. Okay, so we're going to move to population demographics, as we get a lot of questions about these, so I thought I would include some of those. This chart, I kind of like it, shows the difference in offense type, and it breaks it out by gender. So you can see between male and female, the types of offenses people are being convicted of, and the percentage that it makes up. So, you know, the top shows that the male percentage is 56% felony, the female percentage is 42% felony, and then it kind of breaks it down below there. The next chart just shows the whole population and breaks it down by gender, male and female. It'll give you the percentage of females and the number of males. This one just focuses on the female corrections populations and the different legal statuses. Again, this particular chart, I should have said this on some of them, is a snapshot, so it's the typical day that we're looking at. It's going to be usually June 30th of any calendar year, typically when we do these things. And then the similar chart for the male corrections population. One of the things that we're looking closely at, we were just having a conversation about this before the meeting started, is the distribution of age among our offenders. So this chart breaks down the field and the incarcerated groupings. And I think the change here is people generally, I believe, have thought that like the 26 to 29 maybe was the highest population incarcerated, when in fact, it's moved to this 30 to 39 number. So in general, what we're seeing is that our population is aging. And this next chart, Chart 123, really sort of points that out in greater fashion, the number of inmates who are 50 years of age or older, and how that's grown from 2000 to 2012. And it definitely is something that affects, you know, our planning and the way we're thinking about how we provide services in facilities. We also get asked questions about the racial composition. So this is the racial composition of people who are under field supervision. And that breaks down who it is there. This is a percentage breakdown of the racial composition of inmates. There are other charts in facts and figures that really talk about race and also kind of show it in comparison to how the state of Vermont, the population has changed. So you can kind of see the difference there. So I would encourage you to go sort of look at those charts if you're interested in looking at that a little bit more deeply. This chart talks about our mental health services to inmates and the caseload and the difference between men and women. So we can see that of the females on this particular day, which was June 7th, there were 134, and 74.6% of them were receiving mental health services. And the male population, 59.3, were receiving mental health services. This chart looks specifically at inmates who are designated as seriously functionally impaired, which is a designation that we use within our facilities. And there's a lot of discussion around services for this population, so we're keeping track of that and making sure we know who's in that category.
High school.
High school, right. So high school and program services. So these are some of the trends or data points we can see. In the high school, the number of student hours that's being offered over, and what the change is from 2000, 2012. I don't know if you understand anything about that.
So, you know, we have a proposal on table to migrate our high school to a new plan, and part of it is driven by the age distribution that you showed a couple of slides ago, and then the number of hours that we deliver. So we're moving the high school from a kind of an educational environment to an educational job skill building environment, targeted not towards necessarily young people, but for people who are a different age groups, because our population is aging.
The other rows, we're talking about offenders who are participating in some of the programs that we have. IDAP is the intensive domestic abuse program, ISAP, intensive substance abuse program, and the number of people who are participating in those programs. And then we're also taking a look at our reparative probation. We're doing a lot of work on restorative justice and making sure that people are being involved in those programs and trying to keep track of those over time as well. If there's anything you want to say about that.
That's good.
I think this might be my last slide, but this is the slide everybody's always really interested in, is what's the recidivism rate? And so it's a complicated slide to look at. What I would do is point you to, you can see there's three breaks. So the bottom section of numbers that are sort of in that blue where it says Act 41, Section 5. That is the calculation of recidivism. I forgot what that sound is. The calculation of recidivism that was defined in Act 41, and if I recall correctly, you can tell me if I'm wrong, it's offenders who have been released, who have been convicted, and they have a new sentence for over a year or more, or they've been in jail on a violation for 90 days or longer. So my general sense there is that the recidivism numbers, for the cohort that was released in 2008, for those of you who aren't aware, will track recidivism for three years. And so we won't release a new number until, well, the 2009 cohort, so 2012. Yeah, right. So we'll just keep adding them. We wait for three years. So the newest one that was populated here was 44.4%.
That trend is generally, so the nine-year average is 44.1, which is lower than the first three years, and so the average is generally trending down.
There is a, so this is, okay, I think I really cut the, those were all the slides I had for today, because I wanted to make sure. Is there a different one you would like to show?
I did want to, I thought we had in there. Well, it doesn't matter, can you pull one up?
He can, yeah. He can show it, right?
Can you pull up 178?
I can't pull it up, but I think he can put a, can you put a spotlight on the, put it right here? You might not be able to see, oh, no, wait.
You can pull it up on our website?
On our website? Oh, yeah. Commissioner was pointing out that I have the ability to do this on the website. Smart. Page 178? Yeah.
Just wanted to show something for our PMP managers.
Uh-oh.
All right, maybe not.
I can do it, I swear. I didn't like what I was asking you to do.
I could verbally describe it. Did you give it up?
I'm trying very hard.
Basically, while the trend line has been that more people are on supervision in the community, this chart on 178 shows that the number of times that the people in the community under our supervision are back in court has decreased by quite a bit. And so it's something that we've been talking to the legislature about, that not only has our number of people that we supervise grown, our efficacy has gotten better because the number of people that are back in on new criminal charges has decreased by quite a number. And so we've been talking about this a lot, and frankly, taken some credit for it. But if you're a PMP manager, 178 really, for me, talks volumes about what we're doing. 178, and there was one other chart. It talks about how often are we violating somebody and using jail as a grad sanction? We've cut that number in half. And so guys are doing a better job at using other sanctions other than jail. We went from using jail as a grad sanction 50% of the time for an average of 11 days to 25% of the time for an average of seven days. So it's kind of the direction I think we need to head into. So that's all I wanted to say.
That was a different one. I apologize for that. Okay, well, those were the slides I had, select slides. But again, I encourage people to go and look at facts and figures on the website. And if you're interested in a particular area, there's a lot of data in there, and so it could answer a lot of the questions that you have.
Good. Thank you, Monica. So do you want to go through public comment and see if there's public comments?
I think, do we have, well, we can just go around, and I think what we're going to do is go, again, according to our process, we were going to go alphabetically across the state. And if people have public comment, we'll just move from site to site. So the first site, or if you have comments or questions, it would be Bennington. I'm not sure if there's anyone in Bennington who has a comment or would like to say something?
No, I'm here alone.
I see you there. You're here by yourself? You sure you don't want to say anything?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Cool. How about Brattleboro? Is there anyone in Brattleboro who has a comment or question? Okay, great. See if we can get you there.
Hi, I'm Sheila Linton from Brattleboro. Hey, Anthony.
Hi, now I can see you.
I don't have specific questions yet because I really want to review the documentation first, but I'm just wondering how to access that documentation that you were mentioning? What your website is specifically, when people don't have computer access? How are they supposed to, how are they supposed to access that information if they don't have computer access? Is it readily available either at the local DOCs or whatso-have-you? I'm just wondering in terms of accessibility and also accessibility within your document of how people are able to understand it and read it. And rather than just using this as a format to have testimonies or ask questions, is there somebody that they can call as a point person? So if I get that big packet that looks, well, at least 200 pages long, it seems like, then...
Yeah, no, it's more than 200 pages.
Then if I have questions, I'm sure that it would be best to field those with somebody. And I'm not sure what your process is for that type of accessibility.
Sure. If you have questions about facts and figures, you can contact me directly. Again, my name's Monica Weber. I'm the Director of Planning. And I'll just tell you my email, just for the people who don't have access. I don't want to send you to the website in case you actually can't get there. It's monica weber@state.vt.us. And my phone number is 802-951-5057. So if you have questions about facts and figures, you can call me.
Is it M-O-N-I-C-K?
I-C-A. M-O-N-I-C-A.
Dot Weaver?
Weaver. W-E-E, B as in boy, E-R.
Oh, Weaver?
Yeah. I know, it sounds like Weaver, I know.
It did, I would have totally knocked out the, so it's W-E-E-B-E-R?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. 802-951-5057.
That's correct. And our website, you know, is doc.vermont.gov. Nope. Pretty sure it's just doc.vermont.gov.
Yep, that's right.
And do you ever provide these, like what you have as a handwritten document for either agencies or people who can't get computer access at all? That can pick up a hard copy?
We have some hard copies. We, we don't print enough to hand them out to everybody. But I think if we had a request, if somebody needed a hard copy, we would be able to give you a hard copy. Might not be this found version. It could be a printout of the PDF version, but you'd still be able to get the, the information that you need.
Right. Thank you.
Great. Was there anybody else in Brattleboro who had anything they wanted to say?
Well, I'm, I'm here too. This is Rick. This is it. This is the whole crowd, the two of us.
It's great. It's great you're there. All right. How about we go to Montpelier then?
I have my, I have my usual presentation. If they can hear me or not. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I have my usual presentation. I made it last night. It's, it's about the temps working for corrections. Have we made, I guess, I'll open with a question. Have we made any progress on that?
So we've added in the last two fiscal years, 24 new correctional officers to replace temporaries. Most of them just are the, so eight the first year, 16 last fiscal year. Most of them came on probably October of November of this past fall. So.
Okay, yeah, I knew, I knew that part. I was meaning since the last meeting we had. I mean, the facts and figures are great, but you probably should have facts and figures, charts on employee turnover. And you should include like a pie chart of temp turnover.
So, young David, I, I've given this to you. It's in our facts and figures. We have turnover data.
For temps?
We do. We do. We have turnover data for. It's on page 211, Dave. You're not going to be able to see this, but our, our, our turnover rate was right up in here. Our turnover rate now is down around here. So it was running. And so I have it broken down by all DOC employees. CO2s, CO1s. You'll see CO1s is around 35%. It's down around 17% now, so it's 15. So the date is in there anyway, to answer your question. Page 211.
Yeah, my, my question was about the temp turnover.
It's in there. It's on the bottom.
Temp, temporaries are in there? Temporaries, turnover for temporaries.
I heard the question. They would be based in the CO1 ranks, right?
No, because when I checked with the Department of Human Resources, they do not track temp turnover nor do they include it. The last time I checked with the Department of Human Resources.
So then why are you asking me that?
Well, I was, I was saying that we ought to, that we ought to, since it's, it's almost everybody that we hire, we ought to have statistics of how many people we're hiring as temps. How many, and how many people are turning over? How many people are making it through the ranks? Since 99% of our job offers are to people as CO1s are as temps, knowing that turnover and that expenditure of money would be important. There's where, since that's the entryway into the department, and that's been my, one of my themes since 1979. And I wish there were legislators here because I know certainly you guys are not the problem. I should preface everything I say with that. You guys have been terrific. I know we're all on the same team. But, you know, the last time the Department of Human Resources was even interested in temps was when Pat McDonald was Commissioner. And she wanted, she understood it and wanted to get a handle on it. And I believe the reason that we don't convert those temps and actually save money is because the governor or no governor wants to say that they're adding to state government. They're not counting all of those employees that are doing the job. And you've heard my speech about the fairness issue and the fact that we provide $53 million worth of medical to inmates and nothing to temporary correctional officers for medical. And that they should be in our health plan and that they should have sick days. And you, you've, you've heard all that. The other thing specific to the facts and figures is, can we get a pie chart on how many people are out of state since the year 2000? And how that's, and how those numbers have gone? Or how they've risen? And. So again, I, I wish, I wish it was a different audience, seriously. Because I know you guys are, we're all there, so.
Yeah, well, this question has come up in appropriations, House Appropriations, House Institutions, Government Ops. So the legislature is talking about it.
So Dave, I don't know the exact chart in facts and figures that has out of state, but there is a chart in there. And I'll just make sure that I put that in the answers to the questions so that we can.
Yeah, one fact I know is we just graduated our, what, 190, what was it? 97th academy or something? Something like that since 1990. 198 academies since, what, 93 or 94? I mean, that's got to be a record in the country. When I know that my relatives in Rhode Island, I saved the, the, the big newspaper article. They run an academy every two or three years. They have thousands of people that apply for the job. It's extremely competitive. Last night I was here in a room full of people saying, there's no jobs. We can't get jobs. And I'm sitting here saying, we're always hiring. We can't get employees. So somewhere the two has to mesh. And somebody in the State House has to get the idea that maybe we should make the CO job a little more attractive, i.e. add benefits. This room last night was packed with people on reach-up who were concerned about losing their benefits or on economic assistance and didn't want to lose their health insurance or take a job without it. I mean, hell, we're the state of Vermont. We can't say to them, come to work for us for $15 an hour because you'd lose your benefits. So somebody needs to say to the legislature, we're not setting a very good example. And I know you guys have heard this a thousand times before.
All right.
Is there anyone else in Montpelier who wanted to speak?
Yes.
Now you're all just looking? Yes, okay.
Well, Heather, you're not going to say anything?
Do you want me to?
Go ahead, Heather.
I'm good.
Okay, well, I can then if it's okay.
Sure.
My name's Mark. I'm Mark Mitchell. I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont State Employees Association. So I work for Brother Dave Bellini and the other elected leaders of our union. And I just wanted to highlight some of the issues that our members have directed us to work on in the, in the, right now and in the near future. And wanted the Commissioner and the Department to be aware of some of the concerns that we have. I want to first start out with the issue of the temporary workers in corrections. As Dave mentioned, we see it and our members see it as a real crisis. That is 248 temporary employees in the Corrections Department in fiscal year 2012, $2.1 million in payroll. And we believe, although we, you know, they've pointed out we don't have the figures, but we believe the turnover rate, the instability caused by this over-reliance or exclusive reliance on temporary employees has led to a number of problems. It's a crisis in the worksite because of the turnover. It increases mandatory overtime for the permanent and also temporary correctional officers because folks don't stay on the job long enough. And then there's vacancies that need to be covered with the mandation of overtime. It's a crisis for the permanent COs because they never know when they're going to be able to go home in some cases. And they don't know exactly, you know, what the composition of their worksite is going to be from day to day. It's a crisis in our communities because the state is spending millions and millions of dollars to have this work done, but really creating 248 families of working poor. As Dave pointed out, if folks have families, they, you know, would be eligible for, for public benefits with the wages being paid to the temporary workers. A family would be on food stamps, for example, at the rate that's being paid. And they're not given a hand up out of poverty by the temporary positions in corrections. So we're very concerned about that. And, and we are, you know, our union's going to really step up our advocacy to turn some of these positions, at least, you know, a few dozen, 50, 60, into permanent positions. We understand that the Commissioner mentioned a few positions have been created in the past. But what we really have is a, is a battalion of, of permanent temporary positions. These aren't positions that are going away. It's not work that's going away. It's a denial of reality perhaps by the executive branch and not wanting to count these workers as real workers and part of the state family workforce. And we, we believe that it is, it is, it's unfair and irresponsible to ask people to step up to the level of responsibility and commitment and personal risk of being a correctional officer and, and yet not support them in a way that makes their, their work valuable enough to support their families. So we're going to continue to work on that as a union. And our members like Dave Bellini are very committed to, to seeing some of these positions turned into permanent positions going forward. I wanted to mention the outsourcing of imprisonment of Vermont offenders also. The warehousing of Vermonters in Corrections Corporation of America prisons. Something that has concerned the union for many years, our members for many years. It's been sold by some as being an economical decision because it's cheaper to put people out of state than it is to keep them here. And there's been a number of analyses and articles recently that show that not to be true. Because CCA cherry picks the offenders that they will house. And they take only the, the offenders with, with fewer behavioral problems, no medical problems, no mental health problems. It is cheaper, of course, to house those folks than it is to have the mix that we keep in state that have different needs. So it's bad policy. It's bad economics because we're sending millions of dollars in, in taxpayer money out of state and really not generating any economic benefit here for Vermonters. And it leads to bad results. Folks that are not able to take advantage of the restorative justice programs that offenders here in the state of Vermont have available to them. And it also disconnects families from their loved ones that are incarcerated and makes their reintegration back into our communities here in Vermont that much more difficult. The third point I wanted to briefly mention is the issue of the community high school that the Commissioner mentioned when we were going through the documents. It's disconcerting for our members to know that the discussion about a reorganization or reshaping of the community high school is at such a high level and is, you know, now being asked, the legislature is being asked to fund an implementation of a change when the, the community high school educators and their union really don't know anything about what might be coming down the pike in that regard. Our, our, our union members, the educators at community high school are very extremely dedicated to the work they do and the students that they work with. And they want to be a part of any discussions talking about changing the nature of the program. When we hear that, 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 that things may be changed to refocus the program on vocational skills or education towards the job market, that sounds to our ears and our members' ears like contracting out. And contracting out of work done by state employees anywhere is of concern. But it's a particular concern to our union and our members that work at the community high school. Their educators that have dedicated their entire careers to work with the student population in a, in a wholesale change or a significant change in the work they do, we believe should be done, should be considered with their perspective, specifically being solicited and, and, and heard. And then finally, I just wanted to, yeah.
Is I, I was just going to say, you're running out of time here. So is this your final point?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that there's a number of, of women in the Corrections Department that have stepped forward and, and showed an interest in forming a Women's Caucus of Correctional Officers and other female employees of the Department of Corrections to discuss how to address some specific challenges they face as women working in Vermont's prisons and in other worksites. So that's developing right now. And we'll be in touch as we distill some of the issues and bring them forward through our Executive Committee. But there is that perceived need that there's some issues affecting your women employees that, that we need to take a special look at. So stay tuned for that. Thank you, that's it, Monica.
Great, okay, thanks. So just to remind people, we're going to take the comments and then respond to them and the written responses that were posted on the, on the internet. So that was a lot for us to, to take in. So thank you for that. We'll come back to, yeah, okay. Rutland? I have Rutland here. Newport? I have Newport. Anyone in Newport?
Yes.
Have a comment? Have a comment?
Yeah, yes.
Get closer, closer to the mic.
Okay, I can see you now. Fabulous. Can you tell us who you are?
Sandy Snyder. And we've had a number of rather serious incidents here in the Northeast Kingdom with a near death and with a couple of people murdering people, things of this type or attempted murders. And I had the good fortune to visit the Crisis Center in Rochester, the, the house that takes crisis patients. And it was recommended that the anatomy of an epidemic, which is showing that it is the prescription drugs that are leading to some of these very serious behavior problems over and above the street drugs. And this is Robert Whitaker that wrote Anatomy of an Epidemic. And I am particularly interested in how would we get this to our judges? Because sometimes they request that patients be put on medication. And also to our correctional facilities and staff people so that they can become aware of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anybody else in Newport who had a comment or question? You guys don't have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am.
All right then. Now we'll go to Rutland. Anyone in Rutland?
Afternoon.
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Hi?
Hi, I am Joan Eckley. And I would like to make a couple of comments. I am retired from the Department of Corrections. I retired in '06 from Marble Valley where I worked a lot with sex offenders and a lot of other folks. And I'm currently on a COSA team. And this is a program that is very badly needed for high-risk sex offenders. It's a circle of support and accountability. And this absolutely needs to be increased. I have the team that I'm on working with one offender. We have regular contact every week with the offender. Once a week in a one-hour or an hour and a half meeting. And then I make a couple of other phone calls as well. This way, if problems come up, he has somebody to discuss them with. And this is a critical part of it. And this really should be happening for a lot of other offenders as well. But the sex offenders in particular, because they get out with so many restrictions on them, it's very, very hard for them. They go, they are in treatment for however amount of time they're in treatment. And then they have a lag time while they're waiting for housing to be approved. This can take months or even years before this happens. So the offender goes back into survival mode from treatment mode while they're waiting to get out of jail. Then they get out of jail. Then they're isolated completely. And they go to treatment and they're suddenly supposed to put the treatment hat back on. And it isn't that automatic. And it's a very tough adjustment for them. So that, that needs some help. There should be some sort of ongoing treatment while they are waiting to. There should be some sort of ongoing treatment while they are waiting to get out because they lose an incredible amount of ground in that period of time while they're just surviving in one of the facilities. And they get back into the old criminal ways of thinking and that doesn't help anything out at all. Also, with other offenders who are released into the community, there's a lot of transitional housing money and a lot of money for college scholarships. And my understanding is that there are several folks in the Rutland area who are getting scholarships to the Community College of Vermont and then they fail to attend classes, which is a giant waste when those spaces could be filled by serious students. Also, a lot of the offenders, from what I understand, are working off the books. This means their girlfriends or ex-wives or partners don't get the child support they need and they increase our welfare rolls. And this is just not appropriate. And I do think that more positions should be transferred, more of the administrative positions should be transferred to people supervising offenders in the community and in our correctional facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in Rutland who had a comment or a question? All right, well, people can change their mind and we'll come back. We're going to go to St. Albans.
Hi Monica, no one here. Greg and Sheri are here.
Just us, thanks.
Springfield has one person, right. Just you. Thanks for holding down the fort. We do have somebody in Springfield though, so we'll move there.
I can't remember where you're supposed to sit.
I think anywhere is fine, you just need to talk into the microphone.
Mr. Mike.
Will Hunter, I just had a question about data being available on the website in an ongoing way. There's a website that I look at frequently that has the population at the various facilities and it's very interesting. It also has the furlough population, but I would like to ask whether more of the things that ultimately find their way into facts and figures could be available in a real-time way so that people who are concerned about some of these issues could see at the time that numbers are happening, what they are. And I know that Monica, when your predecessor was there, John Perry, I would call him up occasionally and say, "How many people are there at different facilities who are being held simply for lack of housing?" And he could look that up and give me the information. And so I just urge that in some way in your discussions, you look into making more of that information available to the public in a real-time way.
Good suggestion, so I appreciate that. Did you have anything else, Will?
Not this round.
Okay. So anybody else in Springfield who wanted to make a comment or have a question?
Monica, I would just say that I don't know who reserves the sites, but we kind of had to bully our way in because we weren't scheduled to be on tonight, but they were gracious enough to turn us on, so I don't.
Yeah, I know.
For the next quarter.
Yes, I have a, I must have had a mishap with the scheduling person. I was pretty sure I had reserved the Springfield site, but certainly they are supposed to be on for all of the meetings, so I apologize.
You're aware of it.
Yeah, no, thanks for hanging it up. Springfield? We were in Springfield, no. We were in Randolph. Randolph?
Am I on? Am I on?
Why don't you start talking and?
I'm Betty Edson from Randolph and I hope I have my thoughts together because I didn't think this site was open, so I kind of came on the spur of the moment, but there was something I wanted to say. I've been corresponding with a Vermont prisoner for probably 25 years. This is not somebody that I've known all my life. I met him after his crime when I was teaching a class and he was incarcerated soon after his crime at the Woodstock Jail at that time. And, but I've come to know him over the years and he is very definitely not a whiner and complainer. He's a very articulate man, very bright man, and one who I feel has used his time of incarceration as constructively as anyone possibly could. And he was incarcerated here for many years of his sentence and then he was transferred to two different out-of-state jails, couldn't wait to get home back. And he got back here, I think, about two years ago and has been very dismayed by what he sees as a decidedly more negative attitude in the correctional system than there was here 10 years ago. And I've mentioned this to a couple of people in Corrections, most recently to Secretary Racine. And I have all kinds of respect for Doug Racine and trust him. And his response was that he, this was just entirely different from what he had heard. Just this day, I received a letter from my friend telling me that it was okay to use his name and that he would welcome the opportunity to talk with people about his feelings. And I'm not going to say his name at this point, but I would certainly be happy to share it with Commissioner Polito or with Doug Racine. And I would hope very much, I know other people who work as volunteers in Vermont jails who have heard this from other prisoners that they respect. So I would like just very much for the Commissioner or the Secretary to speak with my friend and others to see if maybe they can hear different voices than they have been hearing. Thank you very much.
So one of us, so Betty, one of us will reach out to you and try, do you have a contact? How are we getting hold?
Did you sign in and leave some contact information for us?
I didn't, I just sort of came when they said they would open it.
Okay.
I think you have my information, Commissioner Polito.
I think I.
Okay, the people down there are going to get that information from you so we know how to get in touch with you so we can continue the conversation outside of this meeting.
You mean leave it here?
Yes.
At this site? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry. We went to St. Albans, didn't we? St. Albans?
No, we did St. Albans, you're right.
We went to St. Albans and there was nobody there. Well, our.
It's just me.
Great people there. Not just you, but you know.
Thank you Monica.
Wilson, how about the people in the room here? Anyone have a, Gordon, why don't you just say something, start talking to the microphone?
Gordon Bach from Cure Vermont. As you know, Commissioner, we work to aid prisoners and former prisoners and their loved ones. This question's about the grievance process. A lot of prisoners come to feel that the mere filing of a grievance makes them a target for reprisal and retribution by staff, but also to some extent fellow prisoners. I'm just wondering if you could, and prisoners have mentioned it and actually recently a lawmaker, someone in the State House, talked to me about that. And I've done a little bit of thinking about it myself, but I'm wondering if the Department could further contemplate how to build into the grievance process, something that could somehow insulate the grievance from such reprisals and retribution. And while I'm asking the Department to consider that, seeing that there are several scores, people around the state at these meetings, if anyone has any other ideas, I'd love to hear from them either at the Cure Vermont Facebook page, which is Cure Vermont spelled out, or by email at cure.vermont@gmail.com. Thank you.
So Gordon, one thing I'd say is if you have evidence or specific cases you can share, and you know, you could do this offline with me, of retribution, we see something in the order magnitude of almost 4,000 grievances a year. So I'm not aware of any incidents where people aren't grieving as a result, but if you have something specific I'd like to say it or you can send me an email.
Yeah, I'd be, I'm always happy to do that, as you know, but I was also wanted to open the lens and talk big picture about how it would be possible to build something into the system. I'm not, I have no idea what that would be, that's why I'm putting it out there.
Okay, thanks Gordon.
Yeah, I think we can just see if there's anybody else around the state who did have a comment or a question. I think we gave every site an opportunity, but perhaps some people have.
Do you know the Berry?
There, we don't, there's no Berry site, yeah. It's MacPillar, right. Did you want to say something? Why don't you come to a microphone then, yeah?
My name is Mel Huff and I'm the mentor to a woman who's at the Chittenden Regional Correctional Facility. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's a documented positive relationship between mentoring and lower recidivism rates, which is the only reason I am bringing this otherwise petty problem up. In December, I asked the administrator in charge of phone calls how I could go about making a deposit into an account so that my inmate could call me. And I was given the information and did make the deposit. She then tried repeatedly to call me. Only once did a call go through. All of the other times, I could hear an automatic message telling her, "Your call has been refused." I have never refused her calls. I called accesscatalog.com's customer service several times and never reached a representative, only got involved in an endless voicemail cycle. But the automated message said to go to their website for immediate service. When I attempted to log onto the website, I got an error message, 403, that said, "Forbidden. You don't have permission to access this server." Ultimately, I received an answer that asked for information about the facility. And at this point, I requested them to return my money since the service that they claimed they were going to provide had never been provided. And at this point, I stopped receiving messages altogether. This exchange extended from the end of January through late, end of December through late January. Before I came to this meeting, I checked the internet and I saw a message from a company about, which I know nothing, but it purports to check websites and it said that Cybersuitehome.com is no longer a working website. So in the interest of trying to improve communications between inmates and people who are trying to support them, I'd like to ask you to check this out and make sure that people are able to actually use the service to communicate. I also, after having this fiasco, I talked again to Mrs. Miller, who now has left, but she was the person in charge of this at Chittenden Regional. And she gave me information about the coupon system. So once again, I, this time I bought a bunch of coupons and that is working.
Okay.
But it's the other one that is not working.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could you make sure we get her contact information?
Yes, I think. Could you make sure we have your, we'll make sure we have your contact information before you leave too. Yeah, just so we can get back in touch with you. Has there been anyone else around the state who has a comment or a question for us before we wrap up?
Monica, this is Keith in Rutland.
Hi Keith.
Hi. Just a suggestion maybe that we need to look for other methods of communicating the dates of these meetings so that we get a larger population maybe that would be interested.
Green.
I know it was in the local paper, but it was a pretty small, it was a pretty small announcement, so we might want to brainstorm around ideas about how we can get the word out.
I think it's a good idea, thanks. Anybody else?
Make Giffen say something.
Okay, I'm not going to force anybody, I'm not going to force anybody to say anything. I think at this point, well, I will ask the Commissioner if he has anything he'd like to say.
I'll close it with just by saying thank you, particularly to everybody who showed up, but our staff that are working long days and showed up on their own time. We have all the comments, we'll respond. There are a couple that I want to follow up on individually. Monica and I have been taking notes and like I said, we'll try and post these relatively quickly. Keith's suggestion is a good one, these dates are already published and so it's just a matter of getting the word out because the dates for the next two quarters, I think, are already on our website. I know Gordon sent out something to his email group, but we can, we'll figure out a different way to do the media release the next time.
Well, and I also just to, there's also a flyer on the website that can be printed and placed in any of the local offices and, you know, I would recommend that if you're a department staff person to sort of, between now and May, the next meeting is in May 15th, really start to talk to people about coming to the next meeting.
So anyway, so thank you and like I say, we'll work to get the word out for the next, I think the next meeting is June.
May 15.
May 15. So it's three months away and unless there's any other closing comments you want to make? I want to thank everybody and I think we'll sign off from here, so thank you.
[beep]